Good evening, the time is seven thirty-one on January fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. I'd like to call to order the common council meeting and please rise and join me in pledging allegiance to our nation's flag.
Let's believe it. In the United States of America. And consider the power which stands one nation under the government. In business, we deliver to each other justice for all.
You. Next, if you'll please call the law.
Mr. Burnett.
Present.
Mr. Goldstein.
Here.
Mr. Lopez.
Present.
Mr. Jelski Eichner.
Present.
Ms. Smith.
Here.
Ms. Ayers.
Present.
Mr. Sees.
Present.
Mr. Wiggins.
Here.
Ms. Young.
Here.
Ms. Edie.
Here.
Ms. Leonard Strawn.
Here.
Ms. Dunn.
Here.
Mr. Sutton.
Present.
Mr. Frayer.
Here.
Ms. Shanahan.
Here.
Fifteen, we have a call.
Okay, fifteen, we have a call. First item on the agenda, acceptance of the minutes of the regular meeting of December tenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Do I have a motion? Ms. Ayers, are there any corrections, deletions, or omissions? Seeing none, all in favor of the minutes as submitted. Opposed? Abstentions. Hey, motion carries. Next, we have public participation. Is there anybody that signed up?
Mr. Bonaparte.
Yeah.
The only one here, if you need it. Give him a chance to sit down. Don't count this against my time. You okay?
Yep, Mr. Bonaparte, you have a floor.
Thank you. Good evening, Rich Bonaparte, Seventeenth Park Hill Avenue. I'm here to speak on the item seven C ten, the resolution of the rules of the parks. You converted Oyster Shell Park into a dog park without ever going through the approval of the Wreck and Parks Committee. And I guess tonight you're here to approve something you already built. I understand that half the town has pets. But, look, the dog people have an agenda to gain as much space for their pets as they can. Even if that means pushing families off the park. Matthews Cranberry Veterans Black Cell Park. You see them overrun with dogs off the leash all the time. The Cranberry Park rules are not really changing because I was a councilman and we knew how those rules worked. They're not really changing, you're simply just putting them for everybody's reading pleasure, I guess. You're reminding people of the regulations. The Parks Director at the committee said it wasn't his job to enforce the rules, they just make the rules and if you got an issue with dogs, call the dog warden for enforcement. And the police department, that's their job to throw people out of the park at various times. Various hours for when they close the park. All I'm asking is for enforcement of the rules and for the families and children to feel safe in our parks. From roaming dogs and dog waste throughout the parks. Your statutes in that resolution say that the dog owner is liable for injuries. But you too can be on the hook for damages when it's shown you've made no effort to enforce your own rules. As a grandfather of four little ones, I just thought somebody should stick up for the children and families in this process because so far nobody else has. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonaparte. Rich, is there anybody else that hasn't signed up?
No, no one else has signed up.
I don't think anybody else. James, is there anybody online?
Diane Lorcello.
Diane Lorcello. All right, you want to unmute her?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. For the record, my name is Diane Lorcello, twenty-one Little Fox Lane. And I wanted just to speak about mainly the finance and claims item, I think it's seven A, both eight and nine, but focusing on number nine. I did appear before the Finance and Claims Committee to state the same my same concerns about this transfer of funds. But I wanted to be on the record in front of all the council and the public. I ask that this particular vote on number nine be made a roll call vote. Now it's up to, of course, a council person to ask for that. So that we get to know what the stewardship of our money as far as responsible spending. I believe that the transfer, while it is laudable, that two mil- two point four five two million four hundred and fifty thousand dollars were found as overage or leftover from the Cranberry School. Although I, I find, I'd absolutely like to know what other projects we have, this kind of extra money funds left, can just be slid into the ninety-eight South Main Street project. I had asked at the Finance and Claims Committee, I said they are different than land use and building management. Because then I didn't hear any kind of effort to find out exactly in an itemized list, what and why does the Recreation Parks Community Center, which I am in favor of and have said so, needs two million four hundred and fifty thousand more? Just, just because we have this money slid in from Cranberry. It is the job of the council to do their due diligence, to make sure that money is spent wisely, and often you do, but on this you are not. I believe this money should have been put back into the general fund. And then some of the money that we need for, we need for things like enforcement of, for the planning and zoning staff that was not allowed to be hired. For the health staff, we currently have a true need for a full-time lead paint inspector. I think that's a little more important than having maybe a fancy facade in the new South Norwalk school, South Norwalk.
Two minutes, three seconds.
And also now Recreation and Parks, because I've been on those trails in Cranberry and people don't have their, their, their dogs under control. I ask that while it seems that it's terrific that we have this money, I say that you, you vote no or go back to committee for number nine and see and make sure that Recreation Parks itemizes why they need this money and give back some of the money and shift it into operating budget because we really need enforcement with certain departments. Have a nice evening.
Thank you, Ms. Lorcello. James, anybody else?
Greg Helms.
Greg Helms.
I didn't see a hand here.
Hi, my name is Greg Helms, eleven Half Mile Road. And I'd like to address the matter of dog rules at our parks on your agenda tonight, but specifically only at Cranberry Park. I currently serve as the Chair of the Friends of Cranberry Park. First, I'll say that the vast majority of dog owners I've come to know at the park do respect and honor the rules governing those dogs. They're not allowed on the great lawn or in the pavilion or playground areas, but only in the large orchard area and throughout the hiking trails, where they also are required to be either, either leashed or within voice control by their owner. People misunderstand and make mistakes, and we are constantly educating. For sure, some people are rude. Those who own dogs and those who don't. And none of us have any patience for people who want to flaunt those rules or be rude to one another in the process. Some of us are often picking up the poop left by others' dogs, and we're not collecting it because it has some market value. But these offenders are in the minority. Mostly, we all try to share the space. And I've met some wonderful people in recent years with my current dog. Second, I'll suggest that we might be able to mitigate some of the confusion by replacing the signs around Cranberry Park that express these various rules. They're mostly old and faded, but some are also confusing and even contradictory. And if it helps, and with the approval of Wreck and Parks, of course, Friends of Cranberry Park is willing to contribute to the design and replacement of these signs so that they are new and shiny and in some cases less confusing. Maybe it's even time for new trail signs at some point as well. I'll finish by saying that amongst the very large number of people and dogs enjoying Cranberry Park, there are bound to be a few losers, but I do hope they're not allowed to ruin it for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Helms.
Next, we have Mark Gilmore.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Great. So, good evening, Board members and neighbors. Thank you for the opportunity to speak about the value of Cranberry Park and what it brings to our community, especially as an off-leash dog park. Cranberry Park has been, at least for me, pre pre-pandemic, a space in our city for many years, providing you know, great trails and open fields and a great opportunity for dog owners to allow their pets to roam off-leash responsibly. So there are some benefits to that, right? Off-leash parks give our pets the freedom to run, explore, and exercise in ways that a leash often restricts. Well-exercised dogs tend to be calmer, healthier, and less prone to behavioral problems. And socializing dogs from a young age reduces fear, anxiety, and aggression, resulting in better adjusted pets. So it also helps with stronger community bonds. Dog parks are foster community interaction, which we're doing right now, which is great. Neighbors get to meet, friendships form, and local networks grow. People from different walks of life come together around a shared interest. You know, in this case, it's loving and caring for their pets. So you know, we're here to hopefully encourage responsible dog ownership. You know, designated off-leash areas encourage owners to train and supervise their pets in an appropriate space. They also offer a safe and legal location for dogs to run free. We reduce the chances of people letting their dogs off-leash in inappropriate, inappropriate public areas, although it has happened in the past, but like Mr. Smith said, I think we all work to make people behave in the best way possible, in a friendly manner. So, you know, peer support and gentle community policing at dog parks really help educate newer and less experienced owners. So there are a few bad apples, right? It's true that a few irresponsible owners can create a negative experience, and we want to acknowledge these incidents and work towards preventing them, right? And again, I agree with Mr. Smith's idea about clear rules and signage, education, and accountability.
Two minutes and three seconds.
Thank you. So, you know, basically, we're here to, to say that the vast majority of dog owners at Cranberry Park are responsible, considerate, and grateful for this space. We shouldn't let a few negative incidents overshadow the incredible value of an off-leash park for dogs and their humans alike. And I have to say, I've had
You're at three minutes.
Got it. I'm at three minutes? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further speakers? Mr. Spar, are you looking to sign up for speaking?
Yeah, I could briefly.
Okay. Is it okay?
Yes.
Okay, I'm, I was here, I was asked to be here by Mr. Stowers to help address what we are doing because I have the background, but just to be fair, so I wanted to make sure that people knew that I also am interested in promoting the dogs at Cranberry Park. I'm the owner of four dogs, I go there frequently. I'd have to second everything that everybody said here as far as the demeanor and the following of the rules. There are some bad apples, you know, just like though you don't sit there and you don't bar picnics at a park just because some people leave litter around, you know? You might go up to somebody and say, hey, pick that up. You don't ban the pic, you know, ban picnicking, you know, things like that. People are very, very respectful, but the thing that I really like is it builds a sense of community, and Norwalk is a big community. We don't want to be just a city, we want to be a community. And the people that are there, they congregate and they speak and they talk, and it's very friendly. And that's why I'm going to be here in my professional capacity letter, but I wanted to make sure there was no conflict, so I said this. Thank you for letting me. Thank you. That seems to be all the speakers. We'll close public session. We're now at resignations and appointments. But this evening, we just have one appointment to the Conservation Commission, the regular member, Stephen Glock. Do I have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, who is that? Oh, Mr. Goldstein?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Okay. Yeah, so nominate Stephen Clocky to the Conservation Commission. He's someone who has had decades of experience in the field as a senior sustainability consultant at Stephen Winter Associates, who specializes in residential energy analysis, performance testing, and lead for homes and Energy Star certifications. He, his resume is included in the backup for tonight's agenda, and it's quite extensive in the field of conservation and sustainable engineering. I think that Steve is someone who seems to be quite qualified and is an architect licensed in New York and Iowa. And someone I think who could lend a great benefit to this commission.
Any further comments or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the appointment? Opposed? Abstentions. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Next on the agenda are remarks from the mayor, and I guess it very timely that I want to announce that we opened up the dog park at Oyster Shell Park this past Friday. We were supposed to have a ribbon cutting, but the weather was, it would have probably blown us into the water with the wind. And it was very, very cold, so we're going to reschedule that. This was done because the public really reached out to us and asked us to consider Oyster Shell Park a small portion of it for a dog park. And we thought it was very appropriate, especially for people that might live down in that area. A lot of people that live down there that have pets. And it was done for their benefit and the benefit of anybody else, but this park's not just for dogs, it's for everybody. Get out and exercise with your dog. I want to thank Robert Stowers and Ken Hughes for the design and coming up with the way that this park can be developed, and we appreciate that. A lot of people have written back and said it's really a nice place to go, and they're very appreciative. Also, I want to thank Ms. Catherine Sloan Snedeker. As you know that name familiar with the concussion protocols for sports. But also, she reached out to me and asked about the possibility of dedicating the park to the Norwalk Police Service Dogs. As you know, we just recently lost Kamba and Kai to Norwalk Police Service Dogs. But over the years, service dogs have served the, as partner with their handler, lived with the handler, and then when the dog was no longer able to perform due to age or some other illness or sickness, the dog is retired and goes home to the handler. And so eventually those dogs pass on. And so we've decided that we're going to find a way to dedicate the park to the, all the Norwalk Police Service Dogs for the things that they do for the community. So thank you, Ms. Snedeker, for, for that recommendation. Next, we have the Mayor's Ball coming up. I announced it last night at caucus, but March fourteenth at the Italian Center. You can contact this young lady right next to me for, for tickets, or you can go online and get them. The donations this year are going to the Salvation Army and to the Family and Children's Agency. There are two agencies that really had a major impact on the city and the things that they do for the members of our community. The Salvation Army's been in Norwalk for a hundred and forty years. They provide hot meals, access to food pantries, children's programs, worship services. And when there's a fire or something of that nature and the firefighters and others are out in the cold, they bring out coffee and, and food and try to help them, try to make it as comfortable as possible for them. The Family and Children's Agency has been helping our residents for eighty years, providing education programs for parents, development in behavioral science, health services, after-school programs, summer programs, and adoption assistance. So those two organizations will be the recipients of the Mayor's Ball this year. Encouraging people to come out and support the effort. Also, we're very proud. Norwalk seems to get recognition in many different ways. But we have twenty-seven Norwalk residents that made, I'm sorry, restaurants that made Connecticut's magazine's top residents of two thousand and twenty-five list. I was going through the list, I was really impressed, the number of restaurants in the city of Norwalk that had favorable comments pointing out certain ambiances or a certain part of the menu that was most agreeable. And so congratulations to all those who made the list. Also, a week, well, this coming Monday, January twentieth. Don't forget the Martin Luther King's Day Ceremony that we have every year. The ceremony in the evening will start at five o'clock, I guess. It's a little early this year. Starting at five o'clock at the Concert Hall. But don't forget the breakfast at Grace Baptist Church at eight o'clock in the morning that morning. And one of the themes that we always talk about, it's a day on, not a day off. So join us, and I think you'll enjoy the speakers. That's always a good time to, it's a good program. So that is all I have, and I will turn it over to the council president, Ms. Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, under council business, we have the resignation of Patricia Agadale for Board of Ethics as an alternate. So I would like to move that resignation and, Paul, if anyone has any comments, but I would like to call for a vote on her resignation so that we can move on to her appointment as a regular member of the Board of Ethics. So all in favor of accepting her resignation, please raise your hand. Okay, that looks unanimous to me. And then we will move on to appointments. The appointment of Patricia Agadale Board of Ethics as a regular, and do I have someone who would like to say a few words about Pat?
We can.
Thank you, Ms. Dunn.
Pat is kind of a relative, newbie to Norwalk. She came to Norwalk with, full of energy and really wanting to get involved in the city in really positive ways. And she quickly, you know, got involved in so many things and she's very, she'll be great with the Ethics Committee because she's very particular, dot the Ts, you know, or dot the S, question Ts, yeah. But, yeah, she's, she's she's someone I respect a lot because she actually takes everything very seriously and you can really rely on her to be honest and forthcoming, so I think she'd be great.
Any other comments? Yeah, I'd just like to, to thank Ms. Agadale for her service as an alternate. She's done a great job, is what I understand. Brings a lot of professionalism to her position and really thankful that she is willing to continue serving as a regular on the Board of Ethics. So I'll call for a vote. All in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed? Abstentions? All right, congratulations, Pat. We appreciate your service. Next, we have the appointment of Amy Ayala to the Board of Ethics as an alternate. Would someone like to make that motion, please? Ms. Jelski Eichner, thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, I'm very pleased to make the nomination of Amy Ayala for the Board of Ethics as an alternate. Ms. Ayala has literally a decade more or more of experience in corporate governance and regulatory oversight, working to make sure that folks are doing things like reporting their conflicts of interest properly. So seems highly qualified to serve on our Board of Ethics. And I very much appreciate her stepping up to volunteer. It's really terrific to see someone who finds a little bit of extra time in their schedule, and the first thing they think of is how can I help my city? So really very grateful and very much looking forward to her joining the board.
Thank you. I also had a chance to speak with Amy and, and I echo your comment. So, so thanks for making that motion. Anyone else have anything to say? Okay, seeing none, I will call for a vote. All in favor of Amy's appointment, please raise your hand. Opposed? Abstentions? All right, that's unanimous as well. Thank you very much. Congratulations, Amy. I see that she is online. Okay, now moving on to the consent calendar, before I turn it over to Mr. Frayer to read, I do want to make a note that we do have to take one item off of consent due to Ms. Shanahan needs to recuse herself, and that is under Recreation and Parks, item C five. And I will turn it over to you, Mr. Frayer, for the reading of the conjecture.
Thank you. Number, Roman, Roman numeral six is reports on departments, boards, and commissions. A corporate council. Reappointment of Brian Candela Esquire as Assistant Corporation Counsel. Dropping down to Roman numeral number seven, Common Council Committees. A Finance and Claims Committee. Number one, Narrative on Tax Collection and dated December twenty twenty-four. Number two, Narrative on Tax Collections dated January twenty twenty-five. Number three, Monthly Tax Collectors Reports dated November twenty twenty-four. Number four, Monthly Tax Collectors Reports dated December twenty twenty-four. Number five, Claims Committee Report dated December twenty twenty-four. Number six, Claims Committee Report dated January twenty twenty-five. Number seven, authorize the mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute any and all agreements, documents, instruments, or amendments as may be necessary in accordance with the Pennsylvania Education Purchasing Program for Micro Computers P E P P M Contract number five, three, three, nine, zero, two, dash, one, six, five, with the Connecticut Business Systems LLC for a sixty-month lease. A total amount to not to exceed five hundred thousand dollars. Accounts noted. Number eight, authorize the allocation of two million four hundred and fifty two million, two million, two million four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in special capital appropriation funds to Recreation Parks Department for the development and construction of the Norwalk Community Recreational Center at ninety-eight South Main Street. Number nine, authorize the reduction of two million four hundred and fifty million dollars from the free balance in the Cranberry School Improvement Project Capital Budget Account Noted. Number ten, authorize the mayor to enter a five-year purchase agreement with Total Communication, Inc., Francisco I S E licenses with a total cost not to exceed forty-four thousand seven hundred and forty-eight dollars. The city account noted. B, number one, ordinance provisions to chapters ninety-five, Streets and Sidewalks, Section ninety-five dash zero through ninety-five dash thirty-nine. C, Recreation Parks and Cultural Affairs. Authorize the mayor Harry W. Rilling to enter a return agreement for the use of Veterans Park and immediate surrounding areas by J S Endurance for their Garavel, Sono, Half Marathon, Five K, and Kids Run to be held on Sunday, October fifth, twenty twenty-five, from eight thirty a.m. to three p.m. Set up by eight a.m. Saturday, October fourth, twenty twenty-five, with the chair down by five p.m. approximately twelve hundred people. Number two, authorize the mayor Harry W. Rilling to enter a return agreement for the use of Colton, Cap, Bastard Beach, Taylor Farm, and immediate surrounding grounds for the Norwalk Marine Manufacturers Association for their Norwalk Boat Show to be held on Thursday, September eighteenth, February, February nineteenth, September, I'm sorry, Friday. September nineteenth, Saturday, September twentieth, and Sunday, September twenty-first, for twenty twenty-five, from seven a.m. to seven p.m. approximately thirteen thousand five hundred people. Number three, authorize the mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute an amendment to the October twenty-six, ten, twenty-one agreement between the City of Norwalk and the Race Coastal Engineering for Purchasing Project forty-one fifty-four, Design and Permitting for the Replacement of Veterans Park Veterans Memorial Park, Public Marine and Docks, for some not to exceed forty-seven thousand four hundred and seventy-one dollars for construction administration services. Accounts so noted. Number four, authorize the mayor Harry W. Rilling to enter a return agreement for the use of the Brian McMahon with the use of the Brian McMahon High School and immediate surrounding grounds uh, by Boston Build Up for their ten K run to be held Sunday, January nineteenth, twenty twenty-five from eight A M to eleven A M, set up time at seven forty A M Sunday and tear down by eleven ten A M approximately a hundred and fifty people. Number six, authorize the mayor Harry W. Rilling to enter into an agreement with the use of the Silver Mine Elementary School and immediate surrounding grounds by Boston Build Up for their ten K run to be held on Sunday, March second, twenty twenty-five, from eight A M to eleven A M. Setup time is seven forty, uh, A M Sunday and tear down by eleven ten A M approximately a hundred and fifty people. Uh, number eight, authorize the purchasing agent to enter into a multiple three-year sole source agreement with Dunning Industries for the purchase of the Dura Edge Classic Field Deck. Number nine, authorize the mayor Harry W. Rilling to extend the Geese Relief Geese Control Contract for an additional year per the terms of the existing agreement with the extension ending July twenty-six, twenty twenty-six. Okay. Moving down to, uh, D, Public Safety and General Government. Authorize the Mary, the mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute any and all documents and agreements necessary to accept grant funding for the Department of Justice, D O G, DOJ, B J A F Y twenty-four Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant Award, uh, as, um, fifteen P, uh, P B J A twenty-four G G zero four five nine six J A G X. Number two, authorize the Chief of Police, James Walsh, to execute any and all documents by an agreement as may be necessary to implement the Department of Justice, DOJ, E J A, F Y twenty-four Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant Award fifteen P U J A twenty-four G G O zero four five nine six G G J A G X. E, Community Services, Connecticut Health Foundation Grant. A, authorize the mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute any and all documents necessary to apply for and accept grant funds from the Connecticut Health Foundation in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars for the period January first, twenty twenty-five to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. B, authorize the mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute any and all agreements, documents and increments or amendments as may be necessary to implement the Connecticut Health Foundation Grant for the period of January first, twenty twenty-five to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. F, Land Use and Building Management. Number one, authorize the mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute a final guaranteed maximum price G N P amendment. Uh, two, to New Field Construction Group LLC's contract for the new Norwalk Community or Creation Center at ninety-eight South Main Street for a total not to exceed four million six hundred forty-five, seven, four million six hundred and forty-five thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars. Terms of the agreement shall be include the following. Total trade cost, three million five hundred and seventy thousand six hundred and eight, six dollars. C M fixed at, uh, one point nine five percent for two hundred and sixty-four thousand two hundred and sixty dollars. C M contingency, contingency at one point five percent for a hundred and ninety-two thousand five hundred and eighty-one dollars. Balance of this will revert to the city project, uh, at project completion. General conditions fee is six hundred and eighteen thousand two hundred and forty-three dollars. Funds are available from accounts as noted below. Number two, authorize the mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute a guaranteed maximum price amendment to the Downs Construction Company LLC Construction Manager contract for the Cranberry Park Gallagher Mansion Improvement Project for a total amount not to exceed four million one hundred and seventy-three thousand three hundred and forty-two dollars. Terms of agreement shall include total trade cost, three million two hundred and ninety-eight thousand eight hundred and eighty-four dollars. C M fixed fees at two and a half percent for one hundred and two thousand nine hundred and ninety-one dollars. C M contingency at three percent for a hundred and twenty-one thousand five hundred and fifty-four uh, dollars, which will revert to the city at project completion. Uh, general conditions fee of six hundred and forty-nine, nine hundred and fourteen dollars. Uh, funds for this agreement are available in the state, uh, E E C, E E C D Grant Account noted. Number three, authorize the city's purchasing agent to execute a sole source agreement with the Connecticut Temperature Control LLC for Kendall School Building Management system for a total not to exceed ninety-four thousand one hundred and twenty-seven dollars. Funding this, uh, is available, um, in the following account as noted. Number four, Building Management LED Retrofit Lighting Projects, City Hall. A, authorize the mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute an agreement with Energy Resources USA LLC uh, to provide LED lighting retrofit improvements with City Hall for a total not to exceed a hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars, a hundred and ninety-nine thousand one hundred and two dollars and fifty-six cents. B, authorize the mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute any and all documents with Eversource Energy to apply energy incentives with the energy efficient upgrade financing through Eversource On Bill Financing Program City Hall LED Lighting Retrofit Improvements Project. Number five, Building Management LED Retrofit Lighting Projects, Norwalk Health Department. Authorize the mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute an agreement with Energy Resources USA LLC to provide LED lighting retrofit improvements at the Norwalk Health Department for a total not to exceed thirty-five thousand six hundred and twenty-two dollars and sixteen cents. B, authorize the mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute any and all documents with, uh, Eversource Energy to apply for energy incentives and energy efficiency upgrade financing through Eversource On Bill Financing Program for the Norwalk Health Department LED Lighting Retrofit Improvement Project. Number six, Building Management LED Retrofit Lighting Projects, Nathaniel Eli Center. Eli Center, excuse me. A, authorize the mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute an agreement with the Energy Resource USA LLC to provide LED lighting retrofit improvements for the Nathaniel Eli Center for a total not to exceed sixty thousand four hundred and ninety-three dollars and thirty-nine cents. B, authorize the mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute any and all documents with Eversource Energy to apply for energy incentives and energy efficient upgrade financing through Eversource On Bill Financing Program for the Nathaniel Eli Center LED Lighting Retrofit Improvements Project. Number seven, Building Management LED Retrofit Lighting Projects, Roosevelt Senior Center. Authorize the mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute an assignment, an agreement with the Energy Resources USA LLC to provide LED lighting retrofit improvements at Roosevelt Center for a total not to exceed forty-one thousand five hundred and forty-eight dollars and sixty-six cents. B, authorize the mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute any and all documents with the Eversource Energy to apply for energy incentives and energy efficient upgrade financing through the Eversource On Bill Financing Program for the Roosevelt Senior Center LED Lighting Retrofit Improvement Project. Number eight, uh, South Norwalk School Furniture Purchase. Authorities, uh, authorize the purchasing a agent to issue a purchase order to W B Mason Company with various furniture items for the South Norwalk Elementary School for a total sum of one million one hundred and eight thousand four hundred and eighty-six dollars. Funds are available in the account as noted. B, authorize the purchasing agent to issue change orders for the purchase order for a total not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars. Number nine, consent to table the, table back to the committee the following. Authorize the leasing of approximately one thousand fifty-nine plus or minus square feet of space at the Norwalk, uh, South Norwalk Train Station in Batside to the Sono Brewing Company for a term of ten years with three lease less E options to extend the term for a consecutive five-year term period each. Rent to be negotiated approved at the Norwalk Parking Authority. That concludes the, uh, consent calendar.
Thank you very much, Mr. Frayer. Well done. It's a long one.
Yes.
Item nine, under.
Consent to table back to committee.
Right, was that stated?
It was stated. Yes, it was stated. Yeah, item nine, consent to table back to committee.
Thank you.
Correct. Okay, you have heard the consent calendar as read. Um, all in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Abstentions? That carries unanimously. And back to you, Mayor.
Thank you, and congratulations to, uh, Brian Candela Esquire for a reappointment. Now, if my notes are correct, that brings us to item seven, C five, is that correct?
Thank you, yes.
And I understand that Ms. Shanahan is going to recuse herself.
I'll take my phone so someone can let me.
On that item. So we need someone to move that.
And I'm gonna move that.
Miss Young is going to move it and is going to speak on it.
Okay, need to read that. Item C five, seven, C five. Authorize the mayor Harry W. Rilling to sign any and all documents required for the installation of a micro forest at Meadow Street Park, project number D E P A zero, 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 two, zero, one, one, two, two, one. South Norwalk pavement to micro forest urban resiliency project awarded through the Norwalk River Watershed Authority.
Let's just speak on it.
Um, I, I don't know if we need to actually speak on this item. I think that this was done and everybody was in agreement with it. But the reason is we had to, um, allow, uh, Councilwoman Shanahan to recuse herself. But I think there are some questions if we want to. Mr. C.
Yeah, not, not really a question. Um, I, I kind of was opposed to this, uh, a few months ago. Um, because I grew up there and nobody likes to see their neighborhood. They grew up in change and, and not look like they used to. Uh, but actually last night I looked at my medical records from when I was younger and, uh, I had asthma up until I moved out of Meadows Garden. Um, most of it is because of the pollutants that's in the air being right across the street from, um, a junkyard. Um, yeah, I moved out in June and then by the time I physical in October, I didn't have asthma anymore. So that changed in my environment helped, um, me not have asthma. Um, so this change in the environment, especially at a time when you're gonna have a nice new, um, apartments for families there um, is needed, um, so that these kids don't have to suffer through things that the people that grew up in Meadows Garden in the past. So it's, um, I'm just in favor of it, but, um, I just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you. Any further comments?
So, so Mayor, I, I, I just want to comment on that. And so I so appreciate you, Mr. C, for coming to that conclusion because I do know you were vocal in your, your questioning about not having that basketball court. But really thinking that through and seeing that, that this was an improvement, not just for that community, but for the whole city. You know, at large, right? But to, to know that you have that personal experience and can now say that you were part of making that difference in that community. So I really appreciate you sha- sharing that, um, your comments. And I think that that is what this is all about, is making, um, all of Norwalk safe for residents. No matter where you live, your community should not be hurting you, it should be loving you and, and caring really. Being in the place that you want to be in. So thank you. Um, so all in.
All in favor?
I, I, I wanted to.
Just wanted to add one thing, um, if I could, is just to remember that there will be a basketball court at the new school. Right, you know, just down the street. So, uh, which the community will have access to, yeah. I mean, I think, Mr. Dewan.
Yeah, no, Barbara said it. I was gonna say, that was one of our concerns. I was, I was also concerned as well, um, like, uh, Mr. C. And, you know, the basketball court, for all the individuals that's listening or might not know, but yeah, the basketball court will be um, probably not even a whole block or two away. So I think that, that's a good replacement and um, I kind of had to change your heart too once, you know, seeing how close the basketball court will be. Um, so I think it's, I, I really think it's important because people still talk about this to this day about losing that basketball court. I had somebody reach out to me and talk about it about a couple of months ago and I had to explain like, you know, it's gonna, it's gonna be down the street. So I'm really looking forward to see how this greenery is gonna be and, and see what benefits it brings to that community. That's it.
Any further comments or discussion? Ms. Ayers.
Um, I would just like to say, this is the first, I believe, in the city that we will be having a micro forest. And I did bring it up in discussions, I think in caucus or committee, this was so long ago, that if this is something that we deem viable and we can track that it has a healthy benefit, that there are some other places throughout Norwalk that could benefit from a micro forest. Um, the terminology is a little weird, micro forest. What does that mean? How does that? But we can do education around that and we can really, um, help our constituents understand the importance of trees. We have invested as a city a lot of money in, um, putting trees all throughout our city. And this is just us continuing to make sure that, um, as the mayor like to say, we're the best place to live. But we're also ones the healthier options to live in Fairfield County. So I'm eager to see if we are able to continue this trend and put micro forests throughout Norwalk.
Ms. Edie.
Yes, thank you, ma'am. Yes, just want to add, as I added in, uh, committee, just to mention that, um, we could also look into getting small set, uh, growing, having small gardens and growing some vegetables or, um, herbs, um, in the new project on Meadow Gardens where I too grew up. So, thank you. I just wanted to put that out there. Thank you.
Any further comment or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
I just want to say thank you to, to everybody who has had a change of heart. Um, that this is really, really a good thing and, and to what Ms. Ayers has said. I think we're gonna do definitely more than that. And I know part of this plan too is about education. Um, and so I know that that's part of what they plan to do as this comes to life. So I'm done. I won't say anything.
Okay, now are there any further comments or discussion? Glad that was a consent item. All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. That brings us to item seven, C seven, I believe.
Are we gonna get Ms. Shanahan?
Yes, we need Ms. So, I think she has her phone with her. He's texting.
Seven, C seven.
I need somebody to move that. Who's, Miss Young is going to move the item and, uh, speak on it.
Approve Norwalk Park curfew hours as follows. Neighborhood in Pocket Park, September to May. Proposed hours, seven A M to nine P M. May Memorial Day to September Labor Day. Proposed hours, seven A M to ten P M. Regional Park, September Labor Day to May Memorial Day. Proposed hours, seven A M to nine thirty P M. Except Veterans Park, proposed hours are seven A M to ten, to eight P M. May Memorial Day to September Labor Day, proposed hours, seven A M to ten thirty P M. Oyster Shell Park, Calhoun Pastor Beach, Taylor Farm and Cranberry Park, except Veterans Park, proposed hours are seven A M to nine P M.
Would you like to comment on that or?
Um, we have Mr. Stowers here, um, but just to say that I, what we've had as far as hours are concerned and this verbiage and the signage says from dusk, from dawn until dusk. Um, and I think we can do better. And I think to get in line with what other communities of this size, because we're a growing city. Um, we're, we're, we want to have some clarity around that. And I think just having the hours, um, helps that. There were some concerns about folks who like to walk through, um, uh, the beach area early before the parks actually open and maybe some other trails. Um, I don't see this as something where we're gonna tell folks that they cannot do that, but we will hear from the police and from Mr. Stowers. But this is to get some more, to fall in line and just to, just to have some clarity. And I think that this makes a little more sense. And I think that it helps with enforcement if there is an issue because we're clear on what that is. Um, but we have Mr. Stowers here and I believe, Mr., uh, Chief Walsh as well.
Good evening, council members. This issue was tabled, uh, we brought it forth, um, uh, I think two common council meetings ago and it was tabled, um, so that we could go back through some of the, uh, issues that were discussed here. And, um, we took it to heart and went back to the committee. And, um, one of the, one of the things that the, the council wanted was to hear from the police, uh, James Walsh, Chief Walsh about, um, his concerns and, uh, to hear from him. But before that, I just wanted to, uh, tell you how I kind of arrived at this, um, that this needed to be done. One, there's a trend in parks, particularly ones that have had the, um, dusted on. It's kind of the way a lot of parks historically started. I've been in parks, this park business for what, forty-three years now? So I know that that's the way the trend that was going on in those days. But I know as, as, as time has went on, um, parks around the country have chosen to, to actually define their hours for, for various reasons. Um, my staff looked at this region and looked at the, uh, cities around this region. Um, Stamford, uh, they looked at Stamford, uh, their general hours were from six AM to ten PM. They looked at Bridgeport, uh, park hours, eight AM to nine PM. Westport, which is our next door neighbor, here, six AM to ten PM. And then Wilton, also a next door neighbor, uh, six AM to nine PM. So, you know, besides grounds maintenance, besides capital improvements, park usage, programming, park management also includes establishing boundaries around hours for, uh, the peaceful enjoyment of the neighbors around there in, in the late evenings. So some of the benefits, I think, that we will get from this, um, is people know specific hours for, uh, opening and closing. Dust to dawn can be defined too, but you'd have to look in the papers or you'd have to call what dust means today, what dust, what dawn means. Uh, they do have hours, but they're specific and they move. It will curb illegal activities in late hours in the park. It was also give police specific time to move along people that are actually causing trouble. People aren't, the police are not gonna move people because they're in the parks if they're not uh, causing troubles. We talked about people walking through Oyster Shell Park and had a conversation with the chief about that. So he will address those kinds of things when he's talking. So these are the, uh, also accreditation. We're going for, for accreditation. Uh, we're real close to actually, um, um, completing our standards, real close to it, uh, completing standards. Hopefully by, uh, this fall, we will have completed our standards for, for accreditation. One of the things they asked about is operate, operations and operating hours. So we wanted to be trying to be consistent with, with other, um, uh, parks that have had their accreditation. In the Northeast, there's only two, um, park departments, park and rec departments that have accreditation. New London and Hartford, but only their recreation divisions are accredited, not their parks. So we be, we would be the first ones to have parks and recreation, uh, divisions, uh, accredited. So I want to, um, ask, uh, Chief Walsh to be here tonight. I think he's on virtual, uh, to, to answer some of the questions, I believe. Uh, Mr. Freyer, you have some questions about statistics. I think he, he can clear that up a little bit. Um, so.
Chief, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor Rilling. Good evening, uh, everyone, common council. Good evening. Was there any specific questions?
Just, uh, I think the interest was that, is there, uh, initially the police officer is closing and patrolling.
Yes, i- in conversations with Robert and Ken, uh, the past couple of months and in the committee meeting last week, I think the lack of ambiguity and, and closing some of our issues that when we, that what we see at peak season during the summer will help the police with more or less, uh, public safety and resident satisfaction. Um, alone in Vets Park last year in peak season, we received sixty noise complaints. And, and more or less that was due to, uh, nighttime activity, non-sports related or non-boat related activity. Um, and also closing Cranberry Park at a standard time would, would assist us, uh, because the detail was running around the city, responding to calls. And a lot of times we actually had to pull patrol sector cars to deal with, uh, park-related issues that above and beyond the parks detail to handle. Uh, like I said, there was sixty noise complaints alone in Vets Park along Seaview Avenue and some of the merchants and restaurants along Seaview and First there. And it, for a total of four hundred ninety-eight calls for service for the year and a hundred and fifty-six calls in which, uh, patrol had to go during the summer to, uh, address some of the concerns of, uh, motor vehicle complaints, um, noise complaints, open alcohol containers and such at Veterans Park. So I do believe the standardization and I do support, um, times that the officers know definitely to close. So we could message that to the city, mess, message that to the users and possibly post signage. So everybody's on the same page when they need to leave.
Thank you. Uh, comments? Uh, Mr. Wiggins, I believe you have your hand up.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think one of our biggest issues was, um, the last time we spoke on this, it was, it was more so about people being able to go in, in the morning, like say five, six o'clock before it opened and walk. And then, you know, if you wanted to take a stroll at night, um, being harassed or being pulled over by, um, to police just for people just walking through or, you know, try to clear their mind, um, and so on and so forth. So my biggest thing was, we didn't want the cops to, to have opportunities to let some people go and, you know, not get, you know, pulled over or, you know, tell them they can't enter the park while others might, right? Depending, just, just despite the time, if, if, if it's done to one, it should be done to, to everyone. And I think, um, if you could clarify that, that'd be great because I know, well, we talked a little bit about it, but um, just for the public to know that, you know, if you're walking through the park, is that okay? Um, if you're just walking, not just, you know, standing there, you know, obviously making noise or drinking or doing anything, you know, of that nature.
Well, that's a decision made by, by, made by this committee on when the closing times will be, uh, Mr. Wiggins. If the, the police department is, is generally concerned with public safety. So if, for an instance, if we close Vets Park and we close the gates and someone goes and walks in there, um, we don't know what's in the park. So if something were to happen to that individual, we would have to get access to it and such. So, um, the police department will enforce any rules set forth by the, the common council in regards to closing time and respond to any criminal complaints appropriately. But a closing time is a closing time and if, uh, if someone's walking late at night, you know, that, that could impair the officers or the police department's ability to respond. If something occurs to that person within the park because it'll be dark, there'll be less people in there to report same. And they'll impair our access, uh, to the park if the gates are closed.
Further comments or questions?
I don't think it was done.
I wasn't done. That was, that was me.
Okay, well, okay, go ahead.
I'm sorry about that. Um, I just had it muted. But so basically, when it's closed, it's closed, if that's what I'm hearing. So if, if the time is six o'clock AM to nine or eight PM, that's the time. So no one should be walking through, um, the parks if that's the time.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mayor, I, I think we had some concern about folks, particularly, um, at the beach or other places that might walk, like people who get up early, right? Six o'clock, they might want to be walking at the beach. I think that was one of the things that we had talked about, but the gates are closed.
Our hours, the morning hours will not change. Every, the, the morning hours, we've opened the parks at seven o'clock. That, that won't change. So whatever behavior was, uh, occurring at that time, people, uh, parking at, uh, Taylor Farms where there's no gate and people walking on the beach, uh, no, we don't have a problem with that.
I just want, I think we needed some clarity down that. And so even if it's, if they're walking on the beach at six thirty, but they can't get in to park or they park where you said they could park.
Ms. Smith and then Ms. Nigelsky-Ector.
Yeah, and that, this is one of the, you know, the main reasons that I'm glad we're talking about it publicly tonight is the messaging around that because it is confusing. And I know that, you know, that was a concern that I had brought up because I tend to be a rule follower, follower around this type of thing, right? So, um, will there be some kind of like social media messaging where, you know, you let the, the people who have been using the beach, you know, day after day, year after year to go walking, that they are able to park at Taylor Farm and continue walking and exercising the way they always have?
Yeah, we'll work with the, um, communications people to, to ensure, uh, people that they can, the same things that they've been doing, walking, whatever in the morning can continue.
Okay. It's just a matter of parking in a different.
Yes, yeah.
Ms. Nigelsky-Ector, then Mr. Seed.
Um, so I, I just want to follow up and clarify on that because it's not what I just heard from Chief Walsh. I heard Chief Walsh saying he will be enforcing the opening and closing hours. So I do think that's a slightly different question, right? So are we enforcing the opening and closing hours, including to pedestrians as well as vehicles, or are they only being enforced as to vehicles or to people who are committing other infractions such as noise after hours, et cetera? And I think that's a question perhaps for you, Chief Walsh, as well as for Mr. Stowers.
Well, there, there's two different dynamics. You, we're dealing with the, uh, uh, some form of criminal activity at night at sunset. So that's more or less from a public safety concern, that was more or less where the police department had a lot of communications with Parks and Rec in the past two summers. In regards to walking times, in regards to walking times in the morning and such like that. If this board wishes to amend the hours to allow that, like I said, but i- it does put law enforcement at a diffi- difficult position to make discretionary decisions based on parking hours and individuals on what they're doing. So in communications with Mr. Stowers, I thought we would be standardizing, uh, this process to make it easier to allow openings and closings.
Right. So I think I am so confused about what exactly the expectations are. I understand the, the need for standardization. On the other hand, you know, someone who's walking and not causing any, you know, difficulty seems like something we should encourage. I think about Oyster Shell Park as well, the, you know, the Norwalk River Valley Trail running through there. I think people do sometimes use that to commute to a job early in the morning or to get home. I mean, if you're, you know, working at, uh, you know, Sono Collection and it's a beautiful night, you might want to take a stroll up to your apartment on the other side of Matthews Park, right? So I, those feel like appropriate uses to me. I also very much understand, Chief Walsh, I don't want you to be in a position of feeling like you're making discretionary decisions if there's no other, you know, evidence of, you know, a violation of city law or policy, right? It's, it's obviously clear cut in the case where someone is acting inappropriately. So I do think the question is, if you are acting in a way that does not cause disturbance, are we okay with pedestrians during those hours? I think that's maybe the question for clarification.
Mr. Seed and then Miss Young.
Mr. Freyer.
Oh, and then, Mr. Freyer, Mr. Seed?
Yeah, I had pretty much, um, it's, um, just because she pretty much asked my question because I, I think we do want to clarify everything, but I think it kind of does pose a problem and kind of, um, leaves for like selective enforcement. Um, and that's, that's kind of, kind of my concern. And I mean, Oyster Shell Park, I mean, that's the most beautiful view on a clear night. Um, and I'm off to towns walking when it's, um, past dusk or dawn. So, um, that's, that's a problem for me.
Mr. Freyer?
Yeah, I, I really find these, uh, regulations very confusing. It sounds to me from the explanations I'm hearing is that the gate is gonna be closed so you can't park your car. Okay, but you can then walk on the beach or you can.
Well, the gate.
In the park. So is it just for parking or is it for pedestrian use?
Can I clarify something?
Yeah.
The gates are, uh, don't open until seven now and have, have not been open until seven. So no one's been parking in those, in those parking lots before seven. Now, we can't open them and, and go earlier, but we would need more staff. Our staff comes to work at seven o'clock. They open up the, the gates. And so it's up to the council whether or not, uh, they will choose to open earlier, but we'll need more staff.
But again, it comes down to, if I, if I can get into, you, you, you said before, that if I can get onto the beach and walk, if I go through Shady Beach and over to California, I can park my car there. I don't know whether there's a gate there.
There's no.
But I can then walk along the beach at six o'clock in the morning. But I can't park my car at Calf Pasture at six o'clock. I'm gonna have to wait till seven till the door, till the gates open. And it seems like i- i- it, it's, it's confusing to somebody who would like to go for a walk at six o'clock in the morning. All those, I'll go to Westport. I don't need to, I can go in at six o'clock.
Yeah, Westport's hours are six, yeah.
I, I just, it's very confusing. And, and I think if you were to tell me that you can't park your car there before seven o'clock, then I'd say, okay, fine, but I can still walk on the beach at, at, it's quarter to seven.
Yeah, the, the gates are, the, the gates, um, prohibit cars from going into the parking lot.
Exactly. But it doesn't prohibit people from walking on the beach.
No, it, it, it hasn't. The intent of the, these hours was not to change the morning. The morning remains the same as it always has been. So if there was confusion, confusion there, uh, now, then it, it, it's the same as it was. But, but if we set the hours, if, if we set the hours.
The thing that I'm talking about is that, that I can't park there. I can't park my car there and then get out and walk on the beach because I can't act, unless I could access my beach, access the beach some other way.
Yeah.
If I take my bike down there, I could probably do that. Any other, you know, if there's a close, if, if, uh, I'm not that familiar with, with, um, um, with the Oyster Shell Park, whether I can get in there at night or not.
There's no gate at Oyster Shell Park.
There's no gate there so I can walk through. I don't understand it then, that, that, you know, is it a parking ban that we're saying that you, you can't park your car there before seven o'clock? Or is it that you can't get into the park? You can't go in the park?
We're just talking about Calf Pasture Beach and Vets where there is gates. There's gates. Most of our parks do not have gates. People have been, people have been walking on the beach. They can park at Taylor Farms. There's no gate there. There's beach access from there. And as the, I think, as the cap, as, as the chief said, his primary, um, reason for enforcement is if someone's doing something illegal or illicit or against the laws that are made here. But nothing, but nothing, but nothing's gonna change in the morning.
It's, it's his discretion that, it goes back to his discretion, whether it's somebody's doing something illegal or not that he's gonna do it, not whether they're there. Because they could be there at, at, at ten o'clock at night during the, uh, during the winter and not be breaking the law. But he underhit those rules. He would go in there and, and, and stop and question that person.
If they were doing something illegal, that's what he's saying.
It's discretionary.
Yeah.
And how do we know if they're doing something illegal? You know, like, would someone have to call? Would someone have to rush and file a report?
Well, he just said, uh, the chief, uh, said that they had so many complaints, I think he said sixty-nine. And those are for phone calls from neighbors or people who have, who have, um, who have seen or, or, or heard.
But those, but those could happen before ten o'clock or before nine o'clock.
They could.
Or after seven.
They could.
So these don't do anything for that.
No.
I, I just, you know, I honestly think that, that we've got to straighten this out because it's very, very confusing. I I just, you know, I I honestly think that that we've gotta straighten this out because it's very, very confusing. You know, I think half the people on this on this on this desk here are feel the same way that. Is it parking or is it, can I walk on the beach? Yeah, I walk on the beach, but but the park is closed. Well, what does that mean? And then the chief says, if it's closed, I can come in and stop you.
Well, he could clarify. I think the chief can clarify whether or not he would. I think.
Well, just just for clarification. Cranberry Park has gates, Flax Hill Park has gates, Vets Park has gates. Calf pasture beach has gates. Traditionally, through the park system of the parks detail. The police army, for as long as I remember, for thirty-seven years, has always historically closed the gates at a certain time during the evening. We were less concerned about the morning, but because it was the morning. So those four parks. Flax Hill Park, Cranberry Park, Best Park. And Calf pasture are gated and closed by the police department every day. And last year, the problem was the ambiguity of these closing times. And when Mr. Stowers approached me with this. Motion a few months ago, he had gotten my opinion and he wanted statistical data on what our response was and what we have been doing in the past two years. That was provided. So Oyster Shell Park has no mechanism for closing. There's no gates, so people walk through there and it's it's very difficult to patrol to begin with because. Police cars can't go to get over that gate behind the park, behind the playground there, so it has to be walked. Um or driven on a mountain bike. Uh so. Those are the four main parks that the police department patrolled from Memorial Day through Labor Day. And in regards to morning things, that that's never popped up because we've never gotten any calls. Of any concern about people walking or parking on. Beach road or using the park prior to the official opening. And traditionally, a Parks and Rec employee has always opened the gates at around seven A M for Calf pasture. And the west gate at Vets Park is open that. Is adjacent to Seaboo Avenue for boat access, but the inner gate is closed. Because there's technically three gates at Best Park, one at Eastern Seaboo Avenue, Seaboo Avenue at the east entrance, an inner gate which prohibits. Vehicles from entering the park from the boat ramp and then the boat ramp gate. So the boat ramp gate is traditionally left open.
I think Miss Dunn is next and then Miss Shannon.
I I just, I, well, I guess in general, I'm in favor of this because I do think. Having been a lifeguard, it's like it creates some sense of liability or not liability. If somebody's walking along the beach and they or they go swimming because they're like, oh, it's nice and they're drunk and swimming or something, I don't. It it puts the onus and responsibility on them because the park is closed. Um and the hours that it's open, I assume we are responsible, our liability is there. So for me, it's more of a city liability thing um and versus personal liability if you're walking somewhere. Um, there's there's that aspect. We have lovely different parks, so yes, it's. It's very hard to have an overarching umbrella of this is what it is and making consistent. So it is it is very hard. I also think it's a great tool for um our police officers when people are doing things they shouldn't be doing. You know, if there's people congregating and being loud and 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 creating disturbance with their neighbors, it gives them a tool. To say it is, you know, five of ten, you need to start moving along because it closes at ten. It's not like they're gonna arrest them because it's. Ten oh one, but it it just gives them the tool to put some parameters and structure around for people's lives. So I think that's a good thing.
Yes, Shannon.
Well, I was gonna ask um both Mr. Stowers and the chief um what their comfort level would be with signage that says something to the effect that pedestrians are. permitted to walk for the morning and then having a strict close at night because I do see the discretionary issues that. Miss Nijolsky Actor and others have raised, which is, you know, for the closing hours, it is. An ambiguous, you know, ambiguous type of situation, but in the morning, it feels as though there hasn't been problems and. If we say pedestrians are allowed at certain, you know, at sunrise, is that something that we could make an addition to to make it more clear?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that at all. I don't know what the chief would say, but I don't have.
That's 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 what we, that's what been happening for years, uh councilwoman. Um people park on beach road and they walk in. Because it's not the police department's responsibility in the morning to open up the gates, Parks and Rec employee does it, we close them at e- in the evening. So that's always been something that's occurred for many years in the mornings.
So you're comfortable with that, chief, that the morning is not really what you're wanting to address?
Yes.
So it feels like maybe we could make a change that in this verbiage that would suit everybody.
With the language is heavily affected pedestrians, pedestrians permitted at sunrise. Something that's simple.
Something like that.
I do agree with Councilwoman Dunn.
Yeah.
There is also a pretty legal aspect.
Yeah.
And um to have some clarity as to when things are open and closed, if you think about it as a lawyer, if there's a case. Um, it would be a key fact. Is it closed? Was it officially closed or not? Um opened or closed? That that certainly is something that's helpful um from the perspective of the law department.
And council, um isn't it true that you sometimes have signs that say no lifeguards on duty at this time, so you may at your own risk, so. That might address the morning swim.
Yeah, we do.
That some that um.
The art position that people are always swimming at their own risk.
My thing, Lisa, is if we post something that says, go ahead and walk. If somebody trips on something and nobody gets to them or something, we're liable as a city. So. You know, if you're gonna walk through a pocket park or neighborhood park that, you know, nobody's gonna really stop you. But if something happens.
We do the defense of soul proximity, so you know, it's it's not a it's not a simple negligence thing, people do have to prove.
Mister Wiggins, you've had your hand up.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think uh. There's still, I don't know if we ha- we even have the time to kinda really get all of this stuff down. Back to how we want it because I I still don't think some of my concerns is really being addressed about. You know, giving a discretion to the officers where some might, some could look like they're um. Committing a crime or whatever and they just walk it to through and I don't, uh what I'm thinking about is. Them being able to just maybe discriminate or whatever the case may be, so. I think there's a lot of work that needs to be done when thinking about, you know, this. I think we're back at round zero where we we started from the last meeting um with some of our, all of our concerns. So I don't know if we want a table again and maybe we have a a different meeting and invite all of us so we can talk about it longer. But I don't, I don't think it's even appropriate to to vote on it tonight.
One at a time. Please through the chair. Anybody else have a comment that hasn't spoken already?
I I I wanna say thank you to Miss Dunn because I think that is the point, right? We we need to protect ourselves as a city. If someone gets hurt on the property, we have specific hours. I think to the point of there's some verbiage and some signage. That's going to need to be placed and it's gonna be different at different places because we allow different things, but I think that's the the key. I hear Mister Wiggins' point about um the possibility of folks being harassed. But to me, it doesn't matter if it was dawn till dusk, there you have an opportunity. It it's. You know, I I I I think the time that we're talking about, I what I heard were for the folks who come in the morning. Right? And who wanna get into the beach and wanna walk or wanna go to those different places. What does that mean for them? So I think if we address those things through our signage and be clear about that, I think we can move forward with it. But again, I think it's about protecting us as a city. Dusk till dawn doesn't work. It doesn't matter if you say six P M, six A M to ten P M. People are gonna do what they're gonna do, but I think if we can come up with that, um I I think that there's something to that. And if and if 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 the uh Public Safety Committee wants to be able to say to the police, hey, what's it been looking like? With the new changes, what's what's been happening, what do the reports look like? I think we can do that too. And I think that that's something that that committee could definitely look at to say, how is that working? Um, but I think to table this again and go back, I mean, I we can, if that's what everybody, you know, we can vote on that. I I I don't know how much farther we're going to get because I think we're having a pretty robust conversation right now.
Yeah, I think I think I think we make the modification as Mario suggested and Miss Dunn suggested. I I think if we made that modification or amendment, um I think um that this would work. But, you know, I I don't wanna see this tabled again.
I think I think that it's really confusion and I think even people looking at this meeting will be confused. Because we told we said, okay, like, nothing's gonna change if you walk in in the morning or you walk in at night, you can do it. Um, we heard from the police chief that his thought was to like standardize the time. And I think it's just, it's still very confusing to me. To me, it's not just the morning. Um, I understand at night, things happen, but there are. A lot of people who walk and I I just, I know because I walk at Oyster Shell Park, there's people that walk. Oyster Shell Park can cause no trouble and are just trying to walk and clear their minds at night. And like I said, it's a beautiful view. Um.
But dusk is dusk and so if you're there at dusk, right?
But I understand, but it's just people have been doing it and like we said.
And I think they will continue to do it. I'm sorry.
But if they do continue to do it, then then we're talking about. With enforcement and and that's the issue with not just this issue with parks, but a lot of people around the city. They say we make these rules or ordinances and then we don't enforce them. And that's a problem that's, like I said, it's not just with parks, it's with ordinances, everything. And that's that's my problem is that we pass a rule and again, we have dusk till dawn as you look at it, the times change and everything. I'm gonna there, but if we're not gonna be enforcing them and it's not making it clear for police because the police. It's not standardized as the police are hoping to um kind of, it's just like we're just doing it. Just so that we can do it and we can have cleaner, cleaner times and understand that, but to me, the enforcement is is a huge issue. And if we're not gonna be clear on that, then um I I can't be in favor.
Miss Young and then Miss Harris.
No, I'm no, I think.
Well, I'm trying to guess.
I know, no, either one.
All right, Miss Harris has not spoken yet.
So I think um. We can kinda break this up and put it into bite-sized pieces. The first vote should really be about the hours. For me, the second vote should be in that might have to go, it really should start in committee and then come to us. The sinus in the the signage and the verbiage, because those are two separate things. They coexist with each other, but they literally are two separate things. So the um recreations and parks. Under the chair should deal with that verbiage and then bring it to the full council. And then those that need additional. Those that need opportunity for additional discussion, they will have that additional discussion. Because this was took it to a special meeting, we had a special meeting on this item and I believe it's online. You can see the position of the city staff as well as questions that are being held. My last point is again about enforcement. I think public safety should deal with the enforcement thing. We have committees for a reason and I have said since I sat in this seat, we do not do the work at this table, we do the work at committees. So if it has been brought up by, I've heard at least four people that said that they are have some concerns. About enforcement, then that concern then goes to committee for that committee to do the work of enforcement. But we can, I don't think it's wise colleagues to hold up this particular um.
Item.
Item, thank you, I can't get it. This particular item for three months. Because we we have more work to do. So can I make a friendly amendment? Is that appropriate? That.
This Nicky Josie Aker and then we'll come back uh.
Sure.
To Miss Harris.
So um and I do, I in many ways agree with Miss Ayers. I think that there are two issues here. I think the issue of the time has alerted us to ambiguities about how. In the historically, this has been enforced and so I I do agree that perhaps we can fix the times. Very narrowly and then perhaps public safety takes up this enforcement question. I would suggest to that point that it sounds to me as if the only place we're actually having serious issues is Vet Park. Vets Park based on the number of complaints, so that possibly Vets Park is strictly enforced. And the other parks have a pedestrian's allowance, but no parking after a certain. So anyway, these are perhaps, and I think it's Miss Ayers is saying, these things seem like nuances that perhaps we should delve into. Because I do want clarity. I am not comfortable with the ambiguity we currently have. I think the chief and Mr. Stowers have different perspectives. And that's totally fine and valid, but our residents need to know one way or the other, can they walk there or not? So I do wanna get to clarity at some point, but I I do, I have no issues with the hours per se, that is not a concern.
Miss Harris.
Okay, so I I Nora, I agree with you totally and we need to do this work. But we need to put it in bite-sized is that we can all adjust. And then honestly, that the community has an opportunity to weigh in. We're fifteen, but we don't, you know, we represent, but we don't speak and we don't know everything. I know that's shocking to some of you. So I um would like to make a friendly amendment to what is this? Six, seven, no, seed seven. That we pass the item as is and that two additional items go to committee. One, the signage, um and may it be unified or identified. Depending on the work of the committee and Parks and Rec. And the second word to be sent to public safety to make sure that the enforcement is um. Standardized and approved by the body. That is my motion.
So Miss Ayers has proposed two amendments. Um, we should vote on them separately. Who, uh, Miss Ayers, can you give the first amendment again?
The first amendment is to. The first amendment is to approve six, seven as outlined in the um agenda as is. That's amendment one.
Like approve it as is?
As is.
Okay, well, that doesn't need to be an amendment.
Okay, so then, I I so then the other amendment is that the work of the verbiage of the signs. Go to the parking Parks and Rec Committee. And the work of of enforcement of. Item seven is dealt with in the Public Safety Committee.
Okay, so you've heard that amendment. Any further discussion on the amendment?
I have a question.
First, Miss Seed, and then Mister.
Uh, my my, I just, I don't, I think like the enforcement, we can handle that at public safety, but I. I just wouldn't be in favor of passing something unless until we got the enforcement under under control. Because the police are gonna have to deal with these rules and regulations. Um, and still, you can say it to public safety or we could decide it there, but I I just think that that should be handled before we approve it. So I just, I wouldn't be voting in favor of it.
Mister Capola. I just wanna make sure I understood the motion. So initially, uh, Councilman Ayers said. Approve six and seven as outlining the agenda, as is, right? But then, as this is the part I I um, he said the verbiage of the signs. Uh, goes to the Park and Rec Committee and the work of enforcement for item seven goes to the Public Safety Committee. That's what I was confused about because if you were proving six and seven is outlined. Then you wouldn't take a part of it and send it back to a different.
It's not six and seven, six is seven, but I'm convinced it's it's C seven.
Number seven.
C seven. C seven.
I misunderstood, okay.
That's okay.
Okay, so, yeah.
It's C seven. Not six and seven.
C seven. Oh, C seven.
C, numbers, letter C.
So you're proving six.
Six is unconcisen. You're on seven, number approved Norwalk Park curfew hours.
Yes.
That's the, that's right here.
So so you're proving the verbiage with regard to the signs?
No, no.
No.
The hours.
Yeah.
The hours, just this as.
Seven, they wanna approve item seven.
Yeah.
As it is. With an amendment to send back to the Parks and Rec Committee. Uh, the uh the process of developing or putting signs up where appropriate. So that the public can be notified as to what the actual rights are.
Yes.
And then I think the enforcement thing obviously would be left up to the police department, but monitored by.
Public.
The Public Safety Committee.
So does that, does the enforcement, does it have to go also back to the Public Safety Committee or not?
Enforcement.
The enforcement issue.
Yes.
Well, that it's gonna, it's gonna be monitored by, I guess, would be the appropriate.
So you're not, so you're not actually sending any.
No, we're not sending anything.
That's what I'm trying, okay, so that's where.
Well, we're voting on seven as is, the verbiage as is. What we discussed is. And we already just talked about this, Recreation and Parks will put together signage, verbiage of what we said. We will have a meeting and discuss that. Record, Public Safety. Through the police department, with the police department will be the folks to help monitor to see if anything is going on, but nothing is being sent back. Hopefully, we're gonna vote on this.
That being the case, do we actually need an amendment?
I don't think.
That's why, that's why, yeah. That's why, that's why, yeah.
We need amendments for that.
Okay, so if we do not need amendment, I withdraw the amendment, the two that I stated, if we don't need the amendment.
But I think we need to do the work.
Once we, once we flesh it out, we look at it and you really don't need an amendment, but you know, the ob, the obligation now is on the two committees.
Yeah.
Uh, any, Ms. Shanahan and Ms. the Josi Aker?
I do wanna speak in favor of Ms. Um, Ayers' ideas about this, because I think this is really important work and I will vote in favor of this. Because I do think that this is something that, um, you almost have to have a work in progress in order to monitor it. And I think it's really important that Mr. Seed's committee picks this up because it is important that the police. Have appropriate oversight on the discretion part. I think that's really important. I mean, especially that, you know, there isn't, you know. Of inappropriate discretion being exercised. And I do think it's really important for our committee to take up the, um, signage. It's, it's, people are already walking. This is something people really value early in the morning. And we don't wanna take that away from people. So I do, um, commend this committee for thinking, or this council for thinking about the two things. The two ends of this spectrum that we really need to address. So thank you for bringing those ideas up and I hope that we follow through on them. I'm sure we probably.
Mr. Josi Aker and then Mr. Uh, Goldstein has not had an opportunity to speak tonight and then Mr. Wiggins.
Um, and I, I just wanna get clarification though. I, um. This language, so this is not, is this a regulation of the park department? Is this, because I would like to see modifications to this language. So I would like the part, Public Safety Committee to work through what the language is going to say here in terms of what it means. For the, to be open and closed for these hours, right? I think that, so I think that is the issue that we're trying to get clarity on here. What does it mean for the park to be open versus closed? And so I do think that this language may need to be modified based on the work of public safety. So my question is, how is that done? Does Public Safety make a recommendation to the Parks Committee? And the Parks Committee then puts forward a revised language here?
I make a suggestion, I see Mr. Stowers. To answer your question, would it be helpful if you just added the four words? Um, but just so that you could, if you, this, this way you could approve this with the, uh, additional language. That pedestrians permitted at sunrise, at least it allows you to permit this to have the hours confirmed. With the understanding that pedestrians permitted at sunrise. And you have the opportunity then to go back to committee and see how things could be further home, particularly with regard to signage. So that it's clear to everybody, but at least from a technical standpoint, these are the hours that are approved with the understanding that, again, pedestrians. Uh, permitted at sunrise. That just may be a way to get this tonight. Continue with your work.
I will also suggest.
Uh, I think Mr. Wiggins had his hand up before me. Okay, no, I, I, I have no issue with what Mario just said and I think what Lisa. Is saying is correct, because I don't think the issues again are about the times. I think the issue is about basically referring to further. Action to committees. Um, I would just, I, I, I think that. I think the question that Nora raised about where this language goes is important because we're creating a record here. Uh, and I wanna make, and I agree that if this language needs to be modified, we need to know where it's going. So Robert, if you don't know the answer to that question, um, I think that actually the question. This may end up being a situation where Lisa, um, it ends up being a sort of ordinance slash. Um, public safety, you know, a, a, a sort of joint collaboration here. Because of a, a clear place where this language goes, that's, that's what we need to, that's what we need to be talking about here.
That's, that's exactly what I was gonna suggest and we've had meetings and we've, we've come up with solutions. Uh, uh, with two committees meeting. So I think a joint, um, a joint effort. On this with the pub, with parks and public safety would be the way to go.
Mr. Wiggins?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. So I, I don't, that's, that's what's troubling to me. What's the, what's the rush? Just to vote, just to, you know, get the language, why can't we, uh, send it back to the committee? You know, and bring it back on a, um, the meeting this, later this month or even next month. What, what's the, I'm just trying to figure out what's the rush in trying to, you know, force this, our votes tonight. Instead of table this, tabling this, um, item and just coming back, right? And maybe inviting us to these meetings to, to even talk more or just even listen in or give our suggestions. I just don't understand. I don't feel like it's, I, I see you Barbara, but I, I just don't understand that. I'm, I'm confused to why it's su- such a rush. I'm, I'm, I don't understand why. We're just kinda like trying to force this vote tonight. And maybe you guys can tell me, maybe I, I changed my mind, but I just, I'm, I just, I, I don't get it.
Mr. Goldstein?
Uh, the only answer I'd have, and I, I just based on. The discussion that's happened here tonight, the discussion that happened the last time this came up. There was a clear issue that came to light about setting times that were not vague. Right? So that it was dawn of dusk before, there's a change, as you can see in the regulation here, that. Creates proposed, proposed hours that are clear. What's not clear, and I think you're correct in saying there, you know, there are ambiguities about things like. In, you know, enforcement discretionary acts by, you know, by, uh, law enforcement. Um, permitted actions, you know, at the beginning of the day or the end of the day. Those are questions that I think are obviously very important, but I think are outside the scope of. What time does the park open and what time does the park close? So I can see a world in which, and I think some colleagues have proposed, passing what the times are. But then also working on, you know, these issues that are. Completely, um. The correct issues to be discussing alongside what time does, do at times do these parks open? And what time do these parks closed? I, I don't think those are mutually exclusive.
But what, what if?
Uh, Mr. Wiggins, hold on.
I'm sorry.
So I mean, all I was gonna say was, I, I, cuz that, the debate that we're having, I don't think is, no one's saying. Oh, it should be ten thirty instead of ten P M, or it should be six thirty instead of seven A M. That's not really the conversation we're having. So I don't, I don't personally, unless people feel differently. I don't see a reason why we can't vote on the hours, but then basically follow up. And take, and if we need to modify language to mod, to, you know, make it that much more clear to people. That, uh, when it comes to the other issues that have come to light tonight and previously, um, there's no reason why we can't do both.
Mr. Wiggins?
Yeah, so, so what if they come back after doing all this and say, okay, well, maybe the hour should be earlier. Or maybe they agreed that the hour should be earlier because of whatever reason, you know, for the walkers or whatever the case may be. I'm not saying that's gonna happen, but what if that becomes the case, right?
Then you, then it just, you're just amending language.
Yeah, so.
You're cement, you're just amending language to one.
But, all right, so if, would the signs be up at that point? And I'm just asking.
No, that's a good, that's a perfectly fair question.
Yeah, so that's, that's why I'm asking.
Further discussion?
I have a question.
Ms. Ayers?
Um, upon, if this is passed tonight. When is the slated time for it to be enacted? Cuz that's two different things. If this passed tonight, is it enacted in thirty days? Is it enacted in sixty days? When will this become the regulation?
Mr. Preparation Council?
Well, first of all, I'm just looking at the, um, the information here. It talks about the, uh, Labor Day and Memorial Day. So when you, uh, uh, with regard to these parks, are they closed, um, at any period of time during the year? For Mr. Stowers.
Say it, say it again.
They're not closed at any period of time during the year, correct?
No.
They're, they're closed in the morning and they close at night.
Yeah, they, yeah, the, the hours, they're, they're closed, of course.
Hours, the hours are the only things being changed.
Yeah.
This is just for, so to answer your question, this is approval of hours, um, it's policy, I would assume it would take effect after the vote. Um, there's not.
Well, well, couldn't they not say it takes effect at a certain particular day?
So let me just, let me tell you, let me just say why I asked the question. A colleague brought up that it, it needs to go back to committee to address the committee. Well, the Parks and Rec Committee have already met for this month, so it would not go to committee until next month. And so if, I, I just, I think, I just want clarity, it doesn't sway me in either way. If we need to add that it will not be enacted to ninety days, that's fine with me too. But I think everybody just needs to realize that Parks and Rec, unless they call a special meeting, will not meet until the second week in next month.
My, my understanding was that, um, your proposal was this gets approved, these would be the approved hours. And then, um, the, the, the council decided to go back to the, the, uh, Park and Rec Committee. To discuss what signs would be enacted, where they would be placed in order to, um, uh, note, provide notice on site to the public. So essentially, to answer your question, um, if, if this is approved this evening, these are the hours. Uh, did, um, going forward for the parks. Um, then separately, you're going to address a committee, and I agree that is the better place to do it. Um, how to handle signs? What are the signs gonna look like? What's the verbiage gonna be, um, to have that discussion? Basically, that type of detail work in the committee. So I think that, that would be the sequence on it.
Yeah, we wouldn't wanna, we wouldn't wanna enact it until. All that was, was, uh, clarified and approved.
But it means the hours are technically, the hours would technically be, uh, uh, um, enacted.
Right.
This is approved.
Right.
The reality is that the signs.
We wouldn't boast anything, yeah.
Wouldn't go up until the committee has done its work.
Right.
As of today, sunrise seven sixteen, so this is actually expanding hours and sunset today was four fifty. So we're, if we go from seven to nine P M or ten P M, we're, we're expanding it for all those people. Who like to walk immediately rather than.
Ms. Ayers, would you like to make an amendment to this as to when it takes effect?
Oh, me again? Okay, let's try it. Um, I. Move that the. I move that there be an amendment to, um, number item seven. That says that it will not go into effect until ninety days.
No, no, ninety days?
It's gonna take us ninety days too.
Okay, I admit, I, that it will not go into effect until. Let's say forty days, that's middle.
First day of a certain month.
Mr. Stowers?
How about the first day of March?
Next up, can somebody write that down and then I'll just read it?
Maybe, or maybe just make it really simple, just, because the, the, after the, after the committee confirms the sign language.
Okay.
Yeah.
That could be, uh, you need a specific date. So I think if you're gonna say March first.
Question, can we ask the director who's asked to do the work, is forty five days or sixty days enough? Which?
Yeah, sixty days is enough. March, March first.
So let me, let, let me ask for a vote on the amendment. The amendment for Ms. Ayers is that the item number seven C, if passed. Or C seven, will go into effect on March first.
Yes.
Two thousand twenty five.
Yes.
Okay, March first.
March first.
Yeah, the, the, the hours are gonna be voted on, the hours are gonna be taken care of.
Yeah.
And, but they won't go into effect until March first. This way, this way we get an op, an opportunity to notify the public. To consider what signage is needed and where. Doesn't mean the signage needs to be up at that time. But the Parks and Rec Committee will, will work on that to put that together. But as this Dunn pointed out, these hours, we're actually extending the hours from what they are now.
Right.
So, uh, you know, I, I don't see where the hours as listed here are an issue. Okay, so if we're in agreement to vote on the amendment, all in favor of the amendment? Opposed? Abstentions? I think Mr. Seed was the only opposed opposition.
I, I opposed to.
You were opposed?
Yes. Yeah.
Okay, so Mr. Wiggins is opposed and Mr. Seed. Now, the item before us is item number C seven. Before I call the vote, is there any further discussion on item C seven? Okay, seeing none in favor of item C?
Just one, one quick on readiness. The, the additional work that's going to take place by the, uh, various committees that were mentioned this evening. Is there any potential that these hours as listed before us might change after the work of these committees?
I, I doubt it. Ms. Young?
Uh, it, it, they should not change.
I don't see them changing, but the, the enforcement, the, the language, the communication with the public. Will have to do, uh, a good job on that and, um, of course, it'll come back here, so. But, but the hours won't change.
Any further comments, questions, discussion? So all in favor of item seven C seven, uh, seven, yes, seven, seven. C seven. All in favor of that item that we're talking about? All in favor? Opposed? Mr. Seed's opposed, Mr. Josi Aker is opposed and Mr. Wiggins, I don't, oh, Mr. Wiggins is opposed. Okay, so item seven C seven or whatever carries. That brings us to item.
This is so retarded.
Who said that?
Item ten?
Yes, Mayor. Uh, C ten, seven C ten. Approved resolution concerning the regulations of dogs at city parks. Resolution concerning the regulation that dogs at city parks. The reason, the reason and rationale set forth by this resolution concerning the regulation of dogs at city parks are as follows. Whereas the Department of Recreation and Parks Regulations State Statute one dash four inaccurately states that dogs are not allowed to run loose or roam at large. Upon any park in the city of Norwalk here and after city. And whereas the Director of the Recreation and Parks Department seeks to correct and update its regulations concerning the presence of dogs at certain parks within the city. Department of Recreation and Parks Regulation State Statute one dash nine subsection six. Provides that nothing herein contained shall be deemed to limit the power of the Director to promulgate regulations. Respecting recreational facilities and activities of the city, including but not limited to the use of playgrounds. Golf, golf courses, tennis courts, platform, tennis courts, skating rinks. Bowling greens, community center, ball fields, parks and city buildings subject to the Common Council approval. Pursuant to Department of Recreation and Parks Regulations Statute one dash nine six. The Director of Recreation and Parks submits the three regulations below for approval by the Common Council. Now therefore be it resolved that by the Common Council, the City of Norwalk approve the following. One, dogs shall be allowed off leash at Taylor Farm Park. As long as the owner, keeper or person having charge of the dog is present and has it under command. The owner, keeper, the owner, keeper or person having charge of the dog must pick up after it. Two, dogs shall be allowed at Oyster Shell Park only when on leash unless designated otherwise. Within Oyster Shell Park, there shall be a designated enclosed area where dogs shall be allowed to run loose or roam off leash. And after entering the enclosed area and closing the gate, the dog can be taken off leash. And allowed to run loose or roam within the confines of the fenced in dog park. As long as the owner, keeper or person having charge of the dog is present and has it under command. Dogs shall not be allowed on the playground at Oyster Shell Park. The owner, keeper or person having charge of the dog must pick up after it. Three, dogs shall be allowed on the trails at Cranberry Park while a leash, while on leash or under voice control. As to not unreasonably interfere in the enjoyment of the park by others. Within the confines of the dog park at Cranberry Park, dogs can be taken off leash and allowed to run loose or roam within its confines. As long as the owner, keeper or person having charge of the dog is present and has it under command. Dogs shall not be allowed on the great lawn, playground, tea garden, patios or pavilion at Cranberry Park. The owner, keeper or person having charge of the dog must pick up after it. Four, pursuant to Connecticut General Statute, State Statute twenty two dash three five seven. All dog owners and or keepers shall be liable for any. all dog owners and or keepers shall be liable for any and all damage or injury that their dog may cause or inflict. Further, if the dog owner and or keeper is a minor, the parent or guardian of such minor shall be held liable for any such damage or injury. This resolution adopted by the common council on January fourteenth, twenty twenty-five shall take effect immediately upon enactment and shall remain in effect until or rescinded or modified.
Yeah, Ms. Young moves the item, would you wish to discuss the item?
We're just gonna move on.
A lesson learned.
Yes, um, so we are going, we've had, um, plenty of discussion about this, but I'm just gonna turn it over to Mr. Stowers so he can.
I have Jeff, I have Jeff Spar here also, because he was very instrumental. He and, uh, Brian, uh, Cundella in putting together this language. But, um, one of the reasons why we also included, um, Cranberry um, in this, um, resolution along with Taylor Farms is because, um, dog parks were created for dogs to, to roam. They were, they were created for dogs not to be on leash. That's why they were created. Because in city parks, most city parks, where there is a leash law, dogs have to be on leashes. They can't run. Um, um, they can't run, uh, loose. In Norwalk, however, dogs, our parks don't allow dogs in our parks. So the, the dog parks, as they were traditionally made for, they were made to run. Somehow, some language got in, um, uh, one of our regulations that stated that dogs had to be on leash even in Taylor Farms. And so that's why the, the regulation opens up with, it was inaccurately stated that dogs, um, not be allowed to, to run loose. This, this resolution, however, came about because as the mayor, um, indicated, we opened Oyster Shell Park. And since dogs can't be in parks, there is no way for a dog to get to the dog park unless they're on leash, unless they're allowed on leash to the park because the dog park's in the middle of the park. And so that's why we originally thought about, about this resolution. And then we thought about Taylor Farms was kind of in the same position in terms of dogs, uh, being, uh, required to be on leashes. And then Cranberry, where they were allowed to be on leash, but also on voice control, but allowed to roam, uh, loose in the park. We, we wanted to make that, we wanted to confirm that. Uh, and so that, that's the reason for the resolution. In the meantime, we wanted to open up Oyster Shell Park. So the regulation gave me the authority with the approval of administration and, 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 and the council to continue. So, uh, we made a director's, uh, rule change that went out on the, the web, the, the web because Taylor Farms, not Taylor Farms, but Oyster Shell had to be open. And so we wanted to give the public the notice that they could have their dogs on leash through Oyster Shell Park and then allow them to run loose once in the park. So this, um, uh, director's rule change is only good until the approval of the common council. So we come for you tonight with the resolution to, um, to approve this resolution.
Mr. Spar, are you, Mr. waiting, you're, you're for this item?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. So, uh, yeah, so, um, so one of the things is that, um, if you happen to see, uh, you'll see like, uh, signs that'll say, like, even if you go out to the track there, it'll say no dogs allowed, and it says pursuant to city code, section one dash four. So I'm looking at, and I'm like, well, the city code, we all know what the city code is, but section one of the city code is the charter, and then it goes on after that. So I inquired of Recreation and Parks, what were they referring to? And apparently some time ago, there was something that was, it's called the Code of the City of Norwalk and its Department of Recreation and Parks. And I was asking Ken Hughes to research that, and he couldn't find anywhere where this had been actually, um, approved by the common council. So then when I was looking at this, it seemed like there was some stuff in there that needed to be changed, just as Mr. Stowers had said. When you were looking at this, section one dash four, which is the section that was cited when I saw that on the line, on the, um, that little sign, no owner, keeper shall commit or allow to be responsible for preventing allowing such dog animal to run loose or to roam at large at any time upon any park. So this regulation, whether it was approved or not, I wasn't sure, but we do know, as Mr. Stowers said, that we, you know, we allow them at Taylor Farm within certain guidelines. And they're also allowed at Cranberry Park within certain guidelines. So we saw that there was an, an issue there. But more so, when we had the ARPA funds that provided that we were gonna have, I think it was like a hundred and ten thousand dollars to build the Oyster Shell Park roaming area, okay, the enclosure. As he said, uh, uh, going along the river, there's the Norwalk River Valley Trail sidewalk. And a person could technically then get their dog out of the car, put it on the leash, go along the sidewalk, but then it's about X amount of feet from the sidewalk to the enclosure. And it was a question of how could they get there if we have saying you're prohibited from doing it? There was also a lot of chatter going on online, like on Facebook, but, but whether you are or are not allowed to have the dog on leash. So we said, we saw these distinctions and these issues, and we said, well, let's clean them up. The other thing was in that section one dash four about pets, it says, nothing herein shall prevent the Director from prohibiting dogs or other animals from specific parks, et cetera. So it says that he can prohibit them, but it didn't say that he could allow them. And so then also in these same regulations, and again, it said, as he said, that nothing that would prevent him from creating new regulations subject to the common council approval. So we said, okay, wait a minute, let's do this right. Let's do it all at one time, since these things had come up. The one thing we want to emphasize is this resolution right here is not changing any of the present practice at Taylor Farm. In other words, dogs are allowed at Taylor Farm to roam. So the fact that it's included in here saying it's allowed to roam isn't changing the practice. What it is, is because we have this kind of this ambiguous regulation, which we don't know was ever approved, saying that they can't be allowed anywhere, we're making it clear that they can be allowed. The other thing that you made clear is this resolution i- is not changing the practice at all at Cranberry Park. In other words, we're not saying now you, whereas before you couldn't be off leash, now you are. It's just putting in place what has always been the practice. And in fact, if you go to Taylor, if you go to Cranberry Park, there's an old sign there. And it basically says, basically what this says, the sign there says, uh, dogs may be off leash only in the orchard. People, there's an open area at Cranberry Park, that's called the orchard. It's kind of weird that the open area without trees is the orchard, but it's called the orchard. And on wooded trails, not in the parking area or on the, um, or on the entry road. It says use leash or voice control courtesy and watchfulness to keep your dog from interfering with others' um, enjoyment of the park. Pick up afterwards. But it also says, um, that you cannot have it in the, uh, dogs are not allowed on the, um, uh, main green playground or pavilion areas ever. So it, it's, it precludes them from that. That's, so I just wanted to clarify that. Cause there was a lot of concern, how did this all come up? It came up because there was certain ambiguities. We're trying to clear it up. And the bottom line here, it's not changing anything that's not the present practice. What it is allowing, it's allowing for people to take their dog on a leash to go to the enclosed area where the Oyster Shell Park is. And the one thing that's really good about the Oyster Shell Dog Park is, there's kind of like a little entrance area where you have to open up one gate, go in, close the gate behind you, and then you open the other gate to get in, to go in, so that there's a double protection there as far as people having their dogs on. So that's, that's the reason, it might seem confusing, that's the reason.
Any further discussion of the council or questions? Ms. Dunn, and then Mr. Burnett.
I have a question about it. Is, is there any, um, inclusion? I know that we have dog licenses in the city and, you know, you have to have rabies vaccines and stuff like that. Is that part of our legal responsibility aside from that, or?
Well, well, um, number one is, um, I happened to go to the Oyster Shell Park this past Sunday just to check it out. And, um, there is a big sign there that dictates all the different rules about when to leash, when off leash, this, et cetera. And it specifically says that dogs must have full vaccinations and must have all the licenses. It says it right there at the Oyster Shell entrance.
There's a process for that in the town clerk's office?
Yep, I know.
Mr. Burnett?
People don't have.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Uh, specifically to the item three related to Cranberry Park, I know you, uh, Mrs. Spar, you mentioned you're not changing the practice, but couple of questions. One, is there specific signage by the mansion that indicates dogs must be on the leash? And if not, through this resolution, do we plan to put up signage at Cranberry Park? I have been there several times where dogs have been roaming the area, especially around the mansion. And when asked of the owner to please put your dog on a leash because the dog was interrupting a wedding ceremony or, or some type of event, the owners have constantly indicated they're allowed to let their dog run free.
Well, um, to answer your question, um, right by where the mansion is, there's the, what they call the main green or the, of the main lawn, the great lawn it's called. Okay, so the signage that's there and is still provided is that no dogs are supposedly not, not allowed to run free on that great lawn area, which would be right in front of the mansion. Also, you're not allowed to have your dogs in anywhere near the pavilion, which is again, right next to where the mansion. And the, and the specific, um, specific language that's included here is a little bit more expansive than some of the signs. Because it says, it also includes the tea garden area, which wasn't on this sign that I looked at. Um, that's out there right now. And it also includes the patios. Um, so underneath this provision, it actually tightens it up. So it prohibits dogs from, uh, whether on leash or off leash, it being on the great lawn, the playground, the tea garden, patios, or pavilion. So you, they're not allowed to be there. They're not supposed to be there in that area.
So, my, my question, will we adding signage to this effect?
We do intend to, uh, clarify and add more signage to in, in areas that should be, particularly in areas where dogs should not be. Yes.
We also have animal control officers. I'm not sure, we used to have two. One that worked during the daytime hours and one that worked more in the evening hours. Uh, I think what needs to happen is they need to be assigned to roam throughout the dog park areas and throughout other parts of the city to enforce some of the, uh, ordinances that we have. Because sometimes if somebody like Mr. Burnett might say something and somebody say, well, who do you think you are? And they, they don't, they don't think there's any teeth behind that.
Yeah.
Uh, same thing with some of the, uh, uh, personnel part, uh, personnel for the Parks and Rec Department. They tell them, you know, I'm from the Recreation Parks, and they don't pay attention. They give them a little bit of trouble. So if we have random patrols of the animal control officers going there and looking to see these violations, and starting off with telling people move, they'll move because the person's in uniform. Uh, and then if they, if we, if the problem can, uh, can, uh, still persists, then we can have them start issuing, uh, uh, infractions.
Yeah.
Ms. Smith?
Yeah, I would just like to recommend more signage, uh, around the great lawn and around those areas. Because I think, you know, I, I, I've used Cranberry Park, the trails, you know, and my dog, I've had my dogs off leash there. We know when we come off those trails that we put them on the leash. But I think, and, you know, I, I, I've come off those trails and I like, I think there's a sign, but I haven't seen it, right? I think they need to be much bigger. I think there needs to be one closer to the mansion. And, you know, on the pavilion and near the playground, they need to really be nice and big and, um, very clear.
I agree.
I, I agree, and, and that it makes it a lot easier for people if somebody goes up and complains. Rather than they think that you're like, they want it to, the, the, the complainer, they just go like that.
Exactly.
Okay, further discussion, questions, comments? Okay, seeing none, all in favor of item seven C ten? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously?
Thank you, thank you, uh, council.
I believe. I believe now we have, uh, our ghost of Ms. Shanahan.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Ms. Shanahan, all in favor?
I should bark.
Opposed? They are adjourned at seven, uh, nine thirty-seven. Thank you.